All right, go ahead and call the order. A roll call please, Patty.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Carmen?
Here.
Mac?
Here.
McCaffrey?
Here.
Whitehouse? Chalet?
Here.
Starter?
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight? Mr. Bird?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Uh, anyone from the audience wish to speak on any non-agenda related items? Uh, I think not, not even Melissa tonight. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting?
I was here for, I was here for April. Um, I moved to approve the minutes from the April meeting. I'll second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Chalet?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Starter?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to communications from staff. Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Commissioner Starter. Um, no new business tonight. Um, so a very quick regular meeting and then we'll, um, after adjournment, we do have a work session item. Um, so we'll have a little bit, uh, longer discussion on that, uh, for subdivision regulations. Um, I did have a couple of communications I wanted to share with the commission. As many of you know, uh, Lowry Moyer, uh, has been on the planning commission for a number of years and was recently elected, uh, to be a board of trustee member. So you don't see her in her s- old seat here tonight. Um, we wish her very, the very best in her next role on the board of trustees. And we have advertised for the vacancy on the planning commission. Uh, we've been soliciting applications for that and we expect that we'll be doing, uh, interviews for, for, uh, candidates for that, uh, vacant position here soon. And we have a, a panel process that we go through, uh, with the board of trustees and the chair and the staff liaison for that process. And the board of trustees will appoint, uh, someone to serve in that, in that vacant seat. So I, uh, it's calendars, we'll see, but I, I think we should have someone in place, uh, in time for the July meeting or at least the next meeting. Um, if the July meeting does get canceled. So which was one of my other announcements, we don't currently have any applications that I think are likely to be on the July meeting. Um, just kind of the development projects that we've been working with applicants on. Um, they're kind of in between, um, stages right now and haven't submitted, um, revised plans for review. Um, if they happen to get in for like a site plan that has time for review and process and be ready for the July meeting, we'll schedule it. Um, but if not, then we'll probably cancel the July meeting, uh, if we don't have anything ready for that. We don't have any public hearing items that have been submitted for that date. Um, a couple of other announcements, um, we do, we're, uh, staff is working on the affordable housing needs assessment and strategy development, uh, for increasing affordable housing in the town of Wellington. We've recently put out, uh, requests for proposals, um, soliciting, uh, consultants to, uh, assist with that process. And that will close on June 12th. Um, so we expect to be getting some proposals to evaluate for that consol- uh, consultant selection process. Um, as part of the town's procurement procedures, staff will evaluate the candidates and, and make a selection for the firm that will use for that. But then we'll, we will be looking for, um, creating a steering committee and I'd like to, if there's anyone willing, from the planning commission to serve on that steering committee. I had penciled in that we would pick on, uh, Lowry Moyer for that. Um, but I think she'll be serving in that capacity as a board member now. Um, so I still want to have planning commission representation. So don't need to have an answer tonight unless you, uh, want to jump up and volunteer. But I would be looking for at least one planning commissioner to partake in that affordable housing, uh, process. We'll bring, it'll come back in front of the planning commission for other, uh, forums before we adopt anything or propose any recommendations. But we would like to have someone from the planning commission involved in the process as well as just, as well as the meetings that we'll bring it back for. Um, so another quick updates, town staff is working, um, with Safe Routes to School Wellington on a, um, a grant that Safe Routes, uh, to school Wellington obtained for a Safe Routes to Park grant. We've been focusing a lot of that energy around the I Stone Library, Park Library, Third Street to, um, Boys and Girls Club kind of corridor, just because of the interactions between those routes for schools, parks, library, and the where boys and girls, or where the children go to Boys and Girls Club after school. Pretty important segment. So we're kind of focusing on that and using some tools in the toolbox from that effort to look for construction projects, um, that would be meaningful to preserve those safe routes for our students and our youth. Um, so we're excited to be working on that and we expect that there will be other opportunities for the, uh, similar efforts in the future. And there may be even be opportunities for planning commissioners to partake in some walk audits, uh, to help evaluate some of those particular project locations or corridors. Um, so if those opportunities come up here in the future, I'll definitely be reaching out, looking for, uh, planning commissioners to volunteer for that. Um, another quick update, I think everyone's aware that we're working on a, uh, Cleveland Avenue construction project for the downtown. Um, I don't have a particular ask on this one. I'm sure many of you have already been engaged in it. Um, there has been a survey online, a town hall and some other things, but we're working on design for that project right now. And we would love for you to stay engaged, um, in that project and, uh, by all means, it's, it was a priority recommendation of our comprehensive plan, has a big impact for our downtown. So we would love it if, if planning commissioners could stay engaged throughout that process. And feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions about where it's at, how, how you can get, uh, information and be engaged. Um, I'm nearing the end of my communications list here. Um, many of you, uh, have had the opportunity to work with Paul Whalen, our senior planner, uh, over the last couple of years. Paul is going to be moving on to the next chapter of his life. Um, he's submitted his resignation, he's retiring. Uh, he's leaving Wellington, um, but we're very happy for him to be able to take that next step. In fact, he is, uh, in the process of, uh, relocating some of his stuff to his new home, uh, in Texas. So we wish him very well. Friday will be his last day. Uh, he regrets that he couldn't be here tonight to say farewell to the planning commission, but I know he has really enjoyed working with this group, um, with all the individuals and personalities. He's spoken very fondly of each of you, so.
Will he be in the office on Friday?
Uh, yes, he will be. I, he should be in the office Thursday and Friday. Which leads me to my conclusion, we will be advertising to fill that vacancy, uh, in the planning department. We'll be at, we got, put out an advertisement for a planner. One, two, or three, we'll see what's available, um, and hire, and look to hire a good candidate. Um, we'll see what type of, of, uh, skill sets are out on the market right now. We have had quite a bit of interest already. We just posted the advertisement on Friday, um, and we've already seen, uh, a number of resumes being submitted. So we're excited for the opportunity and we'll be looking to find that next best, uh, individual for the planning department. So those are my communications, um, and chairman, if, if there are any other, um, commission communications, I would, uh, concede the, my position here.
Anything from anybody? Cody gets to all the talking tonight.
I do have a question on, uh, uh, affordable housing. Uh, it seems like I saw in the pre-read, I couldn't find it tonight. But don't we have in the subdivision section of the code, accommodation for affordable housing? And if we do, how's what we're doing here different from that?
Yeah, great question. So the, there, there may be some general language around, uh, creating diversity of housing types in the, in the subdivision regulations or the zoning code. Um, we did take a kind of an initial first step when we did the land use code, uh, process to, um, make some smaller lot sizes that are options that, that help with affordability. So you don't have to pay for so much land for, um, for a starter home or an affordable home. Um, we did some other things with allowing accessory dwelling units. Um, so we've, we've taken a few small steps, um, but to be perfectly honest, not a lot of, um, interest has been generated by those small steps. Um, and we did pursue a grant opportunity to evaluate the affordable housing needs, starting with a needs assessment, um, which I think will be a big, a big part. We, we have a really strong belief that we need more affordable housing in Wellington. We, we see and hear that that's a struggle, but we haven't quantified it in any way. And that'll be a big first step of this, uh, consultant group is to actually quantify what are the needs? Where, where are the gaps? What types of housing products are missing? What's the price point? What's our, what's the area median income and what's needed for affordable housing? It'll really help us dial in that strategy development piece, um, which is part of, was kind of, kind of the, really the meat and potatoes of that effort is to identify if we need affordable housing in Wellington, how are we going to get it? Because the market's not providing it on its own right now. So that would have been likely include a, a couple of different scenarios that we could look at. That would be amendments to the land use code to either require or incentivize different, um, options to increase affordable housing.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any others?
Anything else? Okay, there's nothing else. We will adjourn the regular meeting and go into work session.
All right. I am going to do a screen share so you can follow along with the materials that were in your packet. Always a little bit of a delay. There it is. All right, so, um, kind of following along with, um, the planning commission's direction, uh, from a few months ago. Um, we do kind of, we reached a, a point in the year where maybe there's less development activity going on. It's just kind of a seasonal cyclical pattern. Um, and we heard direction to, there's a couple of topics out there that we want some more information on. And the planning commission 101, so to speak, was high on that priority list. We've done a, a couple of work sessions on different topics. Um, but we felt that subdivision plats would be the next, uh, logical stepping stone. Um, and we do anticipate applications coming in the near future for subdivision plats, uh, for some pretty significant projects. So this is a very timely topic to be discussing. So just kind of want to start orienting you similar to how we had in the past. Um, the, the sections on subdivision plats are in two places. One is the, the general application procedures, which is in, um, Article Two, uh, Chapter 15. And then there's a whole section on subdivision regulations that gets a little bit more detailed. Um, and that'll, we'll circle back to that here in a little bit. It's in Article Six. So I want to kind of start with, uh, just some of the basics. And that's really, I'm, I'm covering this at a pretty high level. We put some additional supporting materials in your packet. And then of course, there's the, the code itself, but the slides, we wanted to keep it pretty high level and allow for some discussion as opposed to just me talking the whole time. Um, so I kind of wanted to start with the basic types of subdivision plats. Uh, our, our land development code categorizes subdivisions into two primary categories. Uh, one being minor subdivisions, uh, and that is the, uh, subdivision plat that meets certain applicability requirements. And it's intended for an administrative review process to keep it simple. I'll come back to that one in just a second. Um, but so, but the second category is major subdivisions. The bulk of the, of the subdivisions are going to fall into this category. Um, one of the, um, provision or the, the applicability provisions for a minor that allows administrative review is that it, well, I'll go, I'll come back to them in just a second, but, um, most of them plats are going to be major subdivisions because they're either new property, just annexed into the town, never been plotted before, or it exceeds the, uh, size or lot count that makes it ineligible for an administrative review, which means it comes to the planning commission as a preliminary, uh, goes to the board of trustees as a preliminary. We'll dig into that a little bit more. Um, and then the final plat, which is the actual approval, needs a recommendation from the planning commission. And then the board of trustees does the final approval, um, of a, of a final plat. So I kept wanting to jump ahead and now I will, uh, for the minor subdivision, this is the administrative review process. Um, so I mentioned that this is only, this, to be administrative, when we updated the land use code, we wanted to make it very clear when this provision could be allowed. And the, kind of what was decided upon was that it has to have been previously plotted within the town. This is important because it satisfies the dedication requirements for adequate public right of way for streets, easements for utilities, et cetera. Um, and that's, those dedications are typically done by the board of trustees. They accept that dedication on behalf of the public. Um, and it allows the board, uh, the planning commission to recommend the board to approve those broader implications that we're going to dive into here in a, in a minute. Um, but so that, that's the first criteria. The second is that it can't ex- uh, exceed five acres in size. And it can't result in four or more additional lots. So it has to stay under that and it was intended purposefully to make it so that staff could review it. You're basically checking for, does it meet all of the applicable standards? If there's no deviations from the standards, they've met the criteria. Then there's really no need to bring it in front of the planning commission and the board of trustees if it's simple and straightforward. And that was the intent of this is simple and straightforward can be done by staff. So here are those findings for approval, um, for a minor subdivision. I'm not going to read each one of these. Um, but starting kind of at the top, it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, so it's, has to be clear that you're not trying to, uh, subdivide land in a way that's contrary to the overall goals of the, of the community. Um, it has to meet the intent of the zone district, which is Article, um, Article Three through three and four of the, uh, the land use code and five is development standards. Um, the minor subdivision doesn't result in newer increased non-conformities. So you can't subdivide a piece of property to make, uh, a smaller lot than the code already allows. It has minimums. You can't divide it further to, uh, change that minimum to less than what the code allows. Um, other non-conformities could be if you're changing a planted setback or, um, corner lots that affect, um, multiple provisions. You can't make a situation worse, but already has a structure on it and you're reducing the setback even lower than what's already allowed. That wouldn't be approved administratively. Um, so the, let's see, amendment mitigates the maximum extent possible to negative impacts on planned facilities. So town staff has, or the town has adopted, uh, master plans for infrastructure, streets layouts, uh, things of that nature. So staff would be doing an administrative review to make sure that any changes, uh, applicable to a minor subdivision um, are in alignment with the streets plan, infrastructure plans, make sure that there's adequate capacity and a means to convey, um, public utilities to all of those properties that are being divided. And can't violate any, any requirement of the code. Obviously, if it, if it violates something, since this is an administrative review process, we don't have a variance, uh, that process is administrative, so they would have to go back up a level to, if you're asking to change something that staff doesn't have authority to, that puts you back into the other category of, um, a major subdivision. So if we got this far to where, uh, maybe a minor subdivision were proposed and it looks like it's eligible, but then last minute, something changes and they say, you know, I really want to do this, we would probably deny that as this administrative process and kick it back up to, you're now applying for a major subdivision that goes in front of the planning commission and the board of trustees. And overall consistency with adopted plans and policies like the comprehensive plan. If we have, uh, our downtown corridor study, well, um, completed, um, or infrastructure plans and other things. It has to be consistent with the goals of the community and our adopted plans and policies.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
So we have, and of course, I know I can't remember the names of the subdivisions, but the one that's, and have no perspective on this side of town, right, that's by the, by the industrial zone. The one that's directly to the west of that.
Sundance?
Sundance, thank you.
Okay.
Battleback Sundance is.
Yeah, a lot of S's.
I know. So that is already plotted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so say like, they came back and they wanted to do some minor changes that fall within this.
Mm-hmm.
But is that plotted?
But it was plotted a long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
So what happens if they want to make a couple of changes? But now we have a lot, our comprehensive plan is different, our codes are new and, well, not new, but they're improved and, right? We've made a lot of changes since that happened. Would that still fall into an administrative? Like, would there be a conflict at that point because it was plotted so long ago?
So the, the timing of the plat is not the significant factor. Because the, the timing, if it was plotted 20 years ago or, or 50 years ago, um, it's still plotted. Those are legal documents. The boundaries are defined, the dedications for public infrastructure, streets and things are defined. Um, so that's not the limiting factor. The size would be, so if, if, if that property owner came in and said, I want to replat all of Sundance subdivision, that's more than five acres, it's more than four lots. So it wouldn't meet the applicability for a minor. We'd say that's a major subdivision. You'll have to go through the major process. Um, interestingly, it's a, a great example. A couple of years ago, before the land use code was updated, Sundance subdivision came in and requested some changes that were of a minor nature. Um, and we had them go through the minor, uh, subdivision procedures at that time. But at that time, that minor process still required preliminary hearings, final hearings, et cetera. But the changes at that time were, we want to, uh, change the width of three lots to create a tract that would allow, uh, an easement to be put through here and be owned and maintained by the HOA because it's a primary connection for water looping lines and irrigation system design. That would have been eligible for this administrative procedure because it was less than five acres had been previously plotted. And they were basically moving a couple of lot lines. They didn't create any new lots. They just changed them and added one track that was actually just tying into existing tracks to kind of connect them for continuity. So that would have been eligible for that minor change because it met the criteria. Um, to Commissioner Carmen's, uh, question, it doesn't necessarily matter if a plat was originally approved as a major or a minor. It's really just that applicability of if it doesn't meet those criteria for size, number of lots, and otherwise it's, it's not eligible. If it were plotted as a, a major, then replatted as a minor to make some adjustments and then came back and reapplied again. It doesn't really matter, major or minor, it's all about the size and complexity of the, of the scope.
That seems like, that seems like a source of confusion for people. Because when I first read through this, and I'm the new guy, but I'm thinking a minor subdivision as in small subdivision or a big subdivision. And so if it's a large subdivision, then it, then the rules of a large subdivision should apply to it. If it's a small subdivision, it's always going to be small, five acres or less. So to me, it seems like there'd be clarity around a change request. So if the change is a small change, it's still a ma- it's still a major subdivision, if it's over five acres.
Right, that, that's, that's true.
And that may be the, yeah, but I'm just saying that, that there's potential for confusion, I think, the way it's written now, because my first reaction was major subdivision, oh, less than five acres.
And, and all the other applicable criteria. Right, it ha- it's, it has to meet all of them, not one of them.
Well, it can't meet all of them because, because included in that is parks, um, multifamily residential, I mean, you can't, a small subdivision of five acres or less can't meet all of them the way this is written.
So maybe, let me see if I can add some clarity to it. Um, so a major subdivision, which is the, the bigger picture, you look at all the criteria. Where are the roads go? Where do the parks go? What are the public dedications for open spaces and things of that nature? Um, that goes through the preliminary and final process with the planning commission and the board of trustees. If someone came in and said, well, there's a lot of catches in that minor, uh, the applicability to it. So if someone came in and said, I, I've just annexed a piece of land and I want to go through the minor subdivision process, it's not eligible because it's never been plotted before. The planning commission, the board didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on parks, open spaces, roads and other things. So that would immediately get kicked out. It's never been plotted before. Um, if they came in and said, I want to replat this, this subdivision, or, oh, I'd like to apply for them. I'm going to try to be more specific with my language. Um, if someone came in and said, I want to do a minor subdivision of these two lots and this park, well, you're not eligible to replat a park. That's dedicated to the town. We're a party in interest to that. So you can't just change a park administratively. That's the town's property, the town has to provide. So there's a couple of different catches in there and, and I'm 100% certain that, that staff, when anyone came to us with this question of, am I eligible for a minor? We've got all the clarity that we need in the code to say yes or no. This is the path that you would be on.
Right.
So like Sundance is more than five acres, but.
All of Sundance, yes.
But what they want to.
Is less.
They were all, right.
If that part that they're changing is less than five acres.
Correct.
Even if the subdivision, I'm thinking of subdivision as in neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's how I interpret this.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Maybe that's the clarity that I could make. When I use the term subdivision, I'm referring to the process as opposed to the neighborhood.
Change of the land, rather than dividing the land rather than creating a neighborhood.
Like a planning commissioner, not a resident.
The, was that the, the, the source of contradiction? Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm going to be, I'm going to try and be.
We all are both.
Yeah, but in this instance, major and minor, it's a descriptor of the application process. Not the whole thing as a whole.
I think my descriptor issue was understanding the definition of subdivision, right? The act of subdividing rather than what we commonly think of as a subdivision, which is like whether you live in the Knowles or Wellington Downs or what, you know, Park Meadows. That's how my brain was thinking about it.
Minor traffic violation or a major traffic violation? I don't know, maybe, not really.
I, I guess.
I.
I understand now, so now I'm in a good place.
It, it's the express lane for making a change.
Small change.
Small changes, yep.
Which goes back to my original question because my unders- in my previous thinking was, well, what happens if they want to do like what you said, change these two lots to create this track or whatever? And I'm just thinking, we'll see, when it was plotted, the street width was, you know, X, Y, Z. But now our code requires it to be larger, then does that, can they still change those lot sizes if the overall plan doesn't meet the current code?
And I, and I, I like that question because to me, it wasn't so much street width, which I think is valid, but sidewalk. Because some of the sidewalks that have been here for a minute are tiny, right?
Yeah.
And if it was plotted that way.
More like an oversized curb rather than.
Right. And, and that's, that's a great point too.
That.
Yeah. And, and something to keep in mind too, well, uh, point well taken. Um, the sidewalk width is not a process of the subdivision process. That's a, that's a construction standard, which is a, it's, so let me take a step back. Cause I, I feel like I jumped right into the code and maybe a broader explanation of, of the process and the, and the requirements would be helpful for just a reset. Um, so when I'm referring in this conversation to subdivisions, I'm referring to the process of subdividing land. That would probably would have been a helpful clarification to make at the start. Um, and in a subdivision plat process, the, the plat document is a legal document that defines property boundaries, road dedications, easements. And it's defining lines on a paper. The width of a road is 60 foot for a residential street. We don't build streets at 60 feet. We build road, local roads at 30 feet. Um, and they have attached sidewalks. That's, that construction, the physical construction of the road and the sidewalk is an engineering standard. It's adopted by a different process and those do change from time to time. We've, uh, we've cleaned up the, we don't allow two-foot sidewalks anymore. We don't allow, uh, new construction without sidewalks. Um, so, but that's a different set of standards than the plat process. When we look at the plat process at, uh, for like a major subdivision, you know, big new subdivision coming into town or we're going to completely redo Sundance, we'll look at making sure that the road width can accommodate the necessary design elements of the physical construction. And a great example of that is the, the road width where, um, even just continuing, continuing that pattern, um, Sundance is, is 300, no, not 300, 160 acres. Um, that subdivision has a major roadway through it. It connects from the end, the north end of Buffalo Creek Parkway and up to, I think it goes to County Road Nine and maybe a tie-in at County Road 68. Um, that's a major roadway. It's intended to carry a larger volume of traffic. It's designed to a different standard. It doesn't have driveway, um, entrances. The sidewalks are detached. There's a bike lane. Um, it's a wider roadway. It's 41 feet on average as opposed to 31 feet for a local road. When we do the plat, we plat an 80-foot right-of-way to make sure there's room for a wider road, space between the sidewalk and the curb, tree lawns, wider sidewalks. Make sure we have enough width in that right-of-way. If we subdivide a plat, a piece of property and with the intention that we're going to build a major roadway through here, but we only require 60 feet of right-of-way, there wouldn't be room for the sidewalks that we desire. So that's kind of the bridge between the plating process and then the public improvement process, which is where they actually construct, designing. So that's kind of the bridge between the plating process and then the public improvement process, which is where they actually construct, designing, construct the physical improvements. Does that help kind of reframe where I should have started in the first place?
So in that example, Sundance was founded five million years ago, as we all know. Um, but when you over um, well, what's the word? The easement that you take for the roads, right? All of that, you take way more than you need so that if the standard before was no sidewalks and blocks and a twenty-five-foot road, now that our standards are different, it can still accommodate that. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, sort of. So maybe a more precise way of illustrating the same point is when we're uh doing a subdivision plat for a new piece of property. We look at what is the town envisioned for? Road networks, for infrastructure capacity. We have master plans for water distribution and wastewater collection systems. So we know that there's some areas in town that need to have larger uh sanitary sewers than like a typical uh eight or ten inch line in a in a normal setting. They're carrying a larger volume um to convey those materials through town to our wastewater treatment facility. Those larger lines often have to be buried deeper to get the gravity flow and they have a size capacity to them. That requires more than a standard fifteen-foot easement or ten-foot utility easement because we have to be able to construct, excavate, get that depth. You have to have a place to put the fill materials that don't impact people's yards. So when we're looking at subdivisions for utility infrastructure, we're looking at what are the long-term needs? Have we provided enough space to ensure that we've got the room to build what we reasonably expect to build? And roads too, um, when the subdivision is platted, if our street master plan calls for a major roadway or an arterial roadway, we require dedication of that amount of roadway at that time of the plat so that the town doesn't have to go back after the fact and purchase private property to build the size road that we thought we would need. Awesome.
Probably as good a time as any then, and maybe for either even further clarification. Not something you need to do now unless you can rattle it off the top of your head.
I'm sure I can.
Maybe I know you could. Maybe an organizational chart from annexation request to completion of an individual home inside of a sub. What all takes place between an annexation?
Mm-hmm.
And then it's a plat review as or it's preliminary, it's final.
Yep.
Where does this application fit in? Major versus minor? The plotting of individual lots, the landscape design standards, once the lots are actually plotted. How does that flow chart carry through from the developer or the, you know, the property owner going, I'd like to annex this in the Wellington? To Lisa moving into a new house in Sage Farms.
I I would love to see that would be super helpful and any bridges, like the engineering one you mentioned. Because the other one I think it might be a bridge that I wrote down was um accommodating for water. Drinking and waste. Because that that project that you and I were on, Lisa, was the result of of neglect, decades of neglect, which led to our water price increase to accommodate this plan. And so for me, as I'm reading through this leading up to today, I'm I'm not seeing in this anything that says, how do we accommodate for increased population, which means increased drinking water and wastewater use? And that might be another bridge.
Sure.
Is that would be helpful to know where all those bridges are.
Yeah, um, great, great point. Uh, the the flow chart of, you know, step by step is something that we will, I think we may have it, but it's probably not in your packet of materials right now. So I can certainly work. If we don't have it already, we can illustrate that pretty quickly for you. Um, I'll rattle it off just generally here in just a minute. Um, so you can kind of see that process as we continue tonight's discussion because I don't want to wait a whole month or more to bring back a visual when we're talking about this now. But um, to Commissioner Carmen's point, um, really valid, you know, infrastructure planning. And that's a little bit different piece than the uh the subdivision plat process where we're defining property boundaries and dedications for roads and and utility easements and things of that nature. Um, but it's definitely a piece of the puzzle in the sense that we don't want to approve a plat for a piece of property with five hundred homes on it if we don't have adequate infrastructure to serve them. So those elements do get reviewed by staff as we work through this process with developers. They the private um developer hires a team of civil engineers and designers and others. And they're required to meet the town's requirements for adequate water supply, infrastructure, capacity. Um, what the town has experienced in the past was just a, you know, as the town has grown up, we didn't have professional staff in Wellington in all the different fields that we have today. And so what we saw was the town was was growing faster than we had plans to support the knowing what the needs were. And we had to play catch-up in kind of a hard way and we've we've caught up now. Um, but the the infrastructure design for the water plant, water treatment plant and wastewater collection, wastewater treatment facility. Um, those planning processes contemplated a population of twenty-six thousand residents, which is what is in alignment with our comprehensive plan for population growth over the next twenty to forty years. There's a lot of decision points in between now and then. And one of those requirements in our comprehensive plan is when we review subdivision plats that we ask those questions. How many, you know, what's your zoning proposed? How many residential units is that going to generate? What's the population predicted going to generate from that? We have capacity for that or we don't. If we don't, we don't approve it. We approve something less or we send them back to the drawing board. If we do have capacity for it, it's in our designs. We've already accommodated that and we're paying for it now through bonds. Um, but the design uh contemplated that we're going to have continued population growth over the next twenty to forty years. So we have that piece covered. We're doing our our road network next. We have um plans to do a transportation mobility master plan where we'll be looking at that same question from a traffic infrastructure standpoint to make sure that our roads are right-sized. And when new developments are proposed and they're going through the subdivision plat process, we'll know to tell them this is going to, you know, we project twenty to forty years from now, this road's going to be an arterial roadway. Developer may come in and say, well, I only need a thirty-foot road, so a sixty-foot right-of-way should be just fine. That'll meet my needs. And we're saying, well, but we know that there's going to be more coming, so we need to right-size it now so we're not removing houses to build roads. So we we've taken a very methodical approach to making sure we have the information needed to get the right dedications at the time of development, so we're not looking back in the future.
Right, right. And if I heard you right, that means that a plat would not be approved if we could not accommodate that.
Or there it could be a phased development plan. If it if it can't be accomplished now, then we can approve this much of it now. The rest you'll have to come back and seek a subsequent approval. That's a phased development approach is definitely an option.
To what extent, sorry, to what extent could the developer compensate for that with some investment of that development? Is that something that happens?
It, I'm not su- I I might ask for clarification on what you mean by that, but I I think most things can be solvable if we know the right questions to ask.
I mean, it goes back to your example with the road, right? So if they didn't want to wait, they're willing to you know, compensate for that in some way, whether that was to offset the cost or you know, and I I realize a lot of them won't, right?
Yeah, it I think it it could just depend on the circumstances and what's what's being discussed. Um, in the example of a roadway, um, it's not uncommon uh if if we anticipate that the, you know, long-term twenty, forty-year outlook of the of the community that might be a four-lane arterial roadway, we might require a hundred and twenty feet of of right-of-way to accommodate that so that we're not going back and trying to seek, hey, we need more road. Will you will you sell it to us at a exorbitant price? We'll require the dedication of the right-of-way with the plat. But we might not make the developer build a four-lane roadway if it's not needed for forty years. So that's that's one example. If right-size it for now based on today's needs, roads don't last forever. They have pavement has a lifespan. If we're going to be reconstructing it twenty years from now, we might widen it twenty years from now. Um, and water and sewer have similar considerations. Um, really just depends on the circumstances. We do have provisions in the code that allow some flexibility um for timing through a phased development. Um, there's some instances where we might agree to a lesser standard based on the unique circumstances of that case. And oftentimes there's cost sharing involved in those. Um, so it really just depends on the circumstances. Um, but we do try to keep an open mind too. As long as we can accommodate the town's needs and the future needs, uh, we don't want to completely stop uh everything just on a you can't beat it today. So they're, you know, no deal. So we have to look at each case on a case-by-case basis.
I just would add that, like the flow chart and like these different conversations and the the master transportation plan that you're going to be doing and the work with safe routes and the work with the affordable housing. I think having the planning commission involved in those different things and understanding the flow chart will over time lead to better questions both to staff and to applicants when they come in front of us. So that we're asking the questions that need to be asked, that we're actually have a a good wholesome view. Like not wholesome, like we're all cool, but like, you know. Yeah, of of what we're considering so that as we're recommending or not recommending things, we understand what we're looking at and the and the broader implications. Right? And and a good example I would use of that is like um Saddleback when they came and I was asking about street widths and stuff, right? Because I often have a safe routes to school lens and like bike paths and different things like that and knowing that those are things that are a challenge in the older parts of town and trying not to create those challenges in the future. But if I'm not part of safe routes to school, I might not have that view. But if you're doing the transportation plan, our ability to wherever feasible that you want us participate in that and have a really good understanding of that. I think in the long run is going to pay dividends all the way around because we'll be very informed planning commissioners and the people that come after us. We'll of course have those tools, but it sets a good standard that would be good. Instead of like, yeah, that looks cool, go with that, you know?
Yeah, I think what you just described is the transition that Wellington has gone through in the last couple of years from a a lack of planning efforts and lack of staffing resources to do that type of review and prepare those products. And we've dealt with some some pain points along the way to go through a comprehensive plan update that creates a vision for the community and where's our long-range land use form going um to infrastructure challenges and how to pay for those. Um, updating the land use code. I'm starting starting way back going through that development application process. It starts with the comprehensive plan. This is our vision. We updated the zoning code, which is the land use. These are the the map behind Commissioner uh Carmen here. These are the the within the town limits. These are the zoning categories allowed for the use of that land and those uses are tied to specific density requirements for residential, so we don't exceed the number of residential units that we can accommodate within those areas. Commercial categories have been calculated too for these are the, on average at least, these this is the average industrial waste demand for these this, you know, many acres. Um, and that map and our comprehensive plan informs our infrastructure master plans. If this is what we reasonably expect to develop, what infrastructure, physical improvements are going to be required to support that need? How many roads are going to be required and what size? Um, so those infrastructure master plans is that next step. Then you get to your subdivision process, your how you divide that land to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and and your zoning categories so that you have your infrastructure to support it. And then it gets into development applications. Well, I skipped annexation, excuse me, when we bring in new piece of property into the town. Does it conform with these infrastructure master plans and the future land use map? Um, after annexation, it goes through process of major subdivision, preliminary and final. Um, if uh final plat is approved, it also includes a development agreement that requires construction of the infrastructure. Um, and from a subdivision plat, now you've got specific parcels or lots identified for development purposes. Now the developer, the builder can come in and say, I've my property's in the town. It's zoned appropriately. It's plotted. Here's my lot. I'm ready to build a house. Here's my application for a building permit to build that house. It's on a plot plan. And that plot plan is reviewed by staff. Yep, you meant all the setbacks, construction standards, you're ready to build that. Um, a few areas of residential do have some provisions for landscape design criteria. Most residential districts, it's a recommendation right now. Um, we pushed for it to be a requirement, but there wasn't the um, the uh palette for requiring every single residence in town to meet landscaping objectives. So there are recommendations. But commercial has specific requirements for landscape design and irrigation standards. Um, so the residential uh for a lot development ends with a with a building permit for a home. Um, commercial properties go through site plan review, which is a process that this commission is familiar with. At that site plan review, you're reviewing the development proposal for all of the um particular um standards, criteria um and design for that site. Uh, and then finally a building permit for that that uh commercial structure, which is an administrative staff function. Blew through that like really fast, but
So like Sage Farms.
We'll illustrate that for you too, but I just I wanted to put it in context for the rest of the conversation for tonight. I'm sorry.
So Sage Farms are the new sage that they annexed into the town with this
Correct.
Board of Trustees, part of that is commercial.
Mm-hmm.
So we in theory would be seeing site plans for any commercial building they're doing.
Correct.
Even though it's within their plan.
Correct. It's it still goes through a site plan review because they have to meet the development standards.
Is that the one over here on Howard?
Yes, on the south end of town. So Yeah. So without getting into the the particulars of that case for Sage Farms' annexation, it was recently annexed in in uh January of this year. Um, but they went through the process of the comprehensive plan calls for this type of land use pattern in this area. They submitted plans that said, this is our conceptual master plan that we think aligns with our future land use map. I'm pointing at the wall. Future land use map's not up there. Um, but they they presented it as we think this reasonably meets your comprehensive plan. That came through the planning commission and the recommendation was, yep, that's consistent with the comprehensive plans, future land use component. Uh, is presented to the board of trustees and they said, yep, it's eligible for annexation. Um, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, so we'll go ahead and annex that property. And that particular property now is in the town limits. And they can't do anything with it except for maintain their existing operations until they go through subdivision plat process to create the lots, the roads and the commercial areas. And then the subsequent processes would would start taking effect after that for um lot permits, residential construction, commercial site plans, et cetera.
And that's a phase development.
That one, because of its size and magnitude, it'll be a phased development. It'll take some time for build-out.
Get really detailed. You can take it all the way through CO too.
That that might be one commissioner, planning commissioner one oh two. Or two oh one, we'll we'll see.
I can pick once you get to the permit for the building and I know what happens after that.
It looks like some of this is actually later on in this package, so you want to keep rolling through this thing.
Yep, absolutely. I appreciate the questions. I'm sorry. I I skipped a couple of explanations there. Um, so I think we're on on major subdivisions. Um, and similar to um the the minor, there there's uh applicability criteria, basically if it if it doesn't meet administrative review procedures, it's a major and it goes through preliminary and final from through both the planning commission and the board of trustees. The findings for approval are pretty similar um in terms of we look at the same things. We look at the comprehensive plan. We look at the the land use. We look at what was intended. Um, and we also look at the broader uh concepts that Commissioner Carmen was mentioning earlier. Um, where we look at uh parks and open space requirements. What's needed in that vicinity? Does it tie into our other parks and trails? Um, and school sites, you know, the school district has an opportunity to require uh land at the time of subdivision plat and we work with them on that. Um, and if they connect by trails, so if we need to open space that between the two parks or between the park and the school, we can require that at the time of plat. Um, we're going to dive into the the subdivision standards here in just a moment. But we do look at all of those components. When we looked at the conceptual master plan for Sage Farms, we looked at, gosh, we really need to have commercial aspects as part of these subdivisions. So before we approve a planned unit development, we want to make sure that there's commercial elements in there because our residents need services. Where's it going to go? And it's subdivision plat will review um to make sure that those commercial areas have lot sizes that are adequate to support the type of of uh land uses, commercial uses that that area was envisioned for. It's a neighborhood uh market type of area. Make sure that those lot sizes are appropriate to meet the scale of the buildings that would be constructed. It's a neighborhood uh market type of area, make sure that those lot sizes are appropriate to meet the scale of the buildings that would be constructed there. If it's an industrial area of town, you have larger lot sizes because you need to accommodate a broader range of uses. Um, so we we look at each of those elements. Um, some other, and these are pretty pretty broad because they're they're findings, they're not specific standards, like must be this dimension or this requirement, but you know, you look at the bullets on this list. Um, that parks and open space are incorporated into the design, doesn't tell you how to do it, just says that we have to think about it. We have to make a finding that we have considered that and we have required what we felt was necessary for that particular application. Same thing for um development that enhances cultural, historical, educational and human service opportunities. Well, it's intentionally broad, we're not sure exactly what every single subdivision plat may need, but we need to think about it before we can approve it. Um, and then getting into some of the other details we talked about earlier, this this is probably where Chairman Sarter was saying, this is already in your presentation, just keep going.
I jumped, we just gotta keep it on track.
All right, um, but the you, so the utility design, um, what Commissioner Carmen had pointed out earlier. If we don't have adequate capacity, then can we approve it? Not, we can approve it if there's a way to get to it, if there's not a way to reasonably provide the actual infrastructure for utilities, then we would say no. If there is a way to do it, we might condition it based on time or or some requirement that's met. Um, we look at transportation networks, which we've talked about. Um, and we look at negative impacts on adjacent land uses. Um, a really great example of this is we know we have commercial areas in town in need for commercial. And we know we have uh residential, both future and existing. Um, one of the things that you'd use to mitigate the potential negative impacts between incompatible land uses is do we did we require enough buffer space between these two incompatible land uses? It's impossible to completely separate all land uses, but we can mitigate it through separation. We can require landscape buffers where they're required to plant trees or hedges or fences. Um, so there's a couple of different ways you can do that, but buffers and open spaces, the primary means that subdivision plat to protect or mitigate those those incompatible uses. So making sure we, you don't necessarily build it at this time, but making sure there's enough space to provide what is determined to be needed. And balance, uh, this is again another question that came up earlier, do we have enough diversity of housing types? Uh, the affordable housing component, um, what what cyclically and historically we've seen across the country. Um, when the market is hot for a particular housing product, you get a whole lot of those. And personal opinion, uh, Wellington's had a whole lot of starter homes built in the last couple of years. Um, and there might be need for more diverse uh housing products too. That sounds really impersonal, impersonable, but that's kind of the market or the lingo of this of the industry. Um, but we need to have more housing variety is a better way to say it. Um, we need to have some smaller homes, we need to have some larger homes, we need to have apartments, we need to have condos. We need to have single family detached and we need to have large lots and small lots, so the subdivision plat process, zoning plus subdivision are the two ways that you ensure that you've got the right mix and variety to support all of our residents' needs. That in itself has a whole lot of concepts that could be expanded upon, but I I love the thinking. Um, it's definitely something to circle back to um in the future. Um, so at this point, I jump from article two in the application procedures into article six. Which are the more specific uh standards for um for subdivision. And the as outlined or as outlined in the in the municipal code. All of our uh sections start with those purpose and intent statements. And the purpose of subdivision regulations. Excuse me. The purpose of the subdivision regulations is to promote the health, safety, convenience, order, prosperity and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the town. So we take this role pretty seriously. Um, and these uh bullet points here under the intent statement. These are again the things that we're looking for um to make sure that we're providing all of these elements for our community. These aren't specific yet, but they're requiring us to look at these things um and set the goal for what we're trying to accomplish. So the next step here, I wanted to kinda dwell on, gets back to again some discussion points from earlier, but the um, when we do subdivision regulations, the relationship to um our zoning map, we've identified areas within town that are are um for different um densities of housing um and different commercial types. The community design principles, we're gonna dive into in a second, and then lot and block design standards. That one's pretty esoteric for for most people, but one that's really important. When you're thinking about laying out a subdivision plat, making sure that you don't have you don't wanna unintentionally create a scenario that's hard for people to live with or work with. Um, and I'll share some specific examples that are pet peeves of mine, uh, just to illustrate that point. So the um, these are again kinda some of the aspirational goals that we look at. Um, compact urban growth was something that was identified in the comprehensive plan um as a goal for the community. Um, on its face, that sounds like a lot, but in a in a nutshell, making sure that gets back to that infrastructure uh design piece, making sure that we've got the right densities in the right places that can be supported by infrastructure in a cost effective way. Um, low density, large lot subdivisions are very expensive because you're extending a lot of pipe, a lot of road miles that requires perpetual maintenance to upkeep and not very many people paying into it. Um, a more compact uh form of of uh development has more users, more businesses, sharing the same resources that make those resources more cost effective to build and then to maintain with the more property taxes that are associated with that particular facility or amenity. Um, in addition to um compactness, neighborhood design, sidewalks, parking open space, these elements we know through through research and and years of experience throughout the country and other countries too. If it's a long ways apart, you're gonna drive. And that discourages the uh going out and meeting with people, talking to your neighbors. You hop in your car, you drive to the business, you pick up your goods, you drive back and you park in the garage, close the garage door and you don't talk to anybody. Um, the design of neighborhoods can influence the interactions between neighbors, interactions between businesses. Promotion of active transportation systems and sidewalks, safer routes to parks, safer routes to schools. Making sure there's an integrated interconnected network of roads and sidewalks to support people living there and businesses operating there. Um, we do that through design, um, or we don't do it through design, that's the other alternative. Um, sometimes we learn hard lessons as a society on what works and what doesn't work. I think this group is pretty familiar with with site design and architecture, landscaping that gets into our site plan review. For a residential subdivision, we do talk about that at a macro scale, making sure that um, if your subdivision is along an interstate highway, that there's an adequate buffer. Um, and maybe some physical construction there of walls, fences, landscaping to help knock down the sound from the road traffic.
I'm a big fan of a wall, anytime we wanna build one, you let me know.
I keep looking at at Commissioner Shalay here for that one, and I know that the highway noise has been a source of consternation in the past.
I mean, I live fairly close to the highway, I live on the first street ne- next to the highway, I don't, my house doesn't back up to the highway. So I can relatively enjoy my backyard unless it's really cold. Because then the way the sound travels, it's terrible, but more importantly, like appreciating, this would be my hope, I mean, I hope we don't build any more neighborhoods right along the highway. Right? Like that's terrible from a commercial growth standpoint, but like for on the east side, particularly where those neighborhoods, both Park Meadows and Wellington Downs. One of the problems that we we've seen happen in real time is during the winter months. It can get very slippery there and these semis come off of the highway and onto the frontage road and, oh, I don't know, right straight towards Baumgart's. Or if you're in Wellington Downs like I am, there's a three rail fence to stop you before you're in somebody's backyard or potentially their family room. Where Park Meadows has more of that hill, so it's not quite as bad, but like from a noise standpoint, from a enjoyment standpoint, to see us put up a wall of some type like they kinda did between Fort Collins and Loveland on the west side of I twenty-five. For that particular subdivision, they eventually put in a wall, it's decorative and it looks nice. I mean, that would be my on my wish list item for Wellington, because I think because we have a highway that splits our town and causes enough issues. I mean, from a transportation standpoint, especially multi-modal, it's, I mean, it's huge, it might as well be the Atlantic Ocean. Um, to provide some serenity while we're all already trapped on one side or the other, if you wanna get to the other. I think would be a great thing to consider when we're, as the town grows, and it will grow. I mean, that's just inevitable, because the town just to the south of us can only grow up. And it's not an affordable place for families anymore, so. That's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, and and going, you know, kinda circling back to the design principles that we look at during a subdivision process. Uh, starting with making sure we have adequate space to construct those improvements, whether it's a wall or a berm or landscaping, there has to be adequate space to do it. Um, historically, there's been a pattern of approving subdivisions where lots are very close to those uh highways or railroads or infrastructure and there's not any space to put those things in. Um, so uh it's it's sometimes difficult to think far enough ahead in the future to anticipate all the relative needs, but subdivision plat is the time to do it. Um, providing buffers and open spaces is a is a huge uh component to that. Um, other things like anticipating what type of transportation are we going to to use in the future? Um, you know, are we using light rail and commuter rail? Um, have we provided space for that? Where is that going to go? Um, bus rapid transit, are we providing room for bus lanes? Can we accommodate a bus stop with a shelter? Um, to, do we have enough space for for our bicycle facilities or electric vehicle charging stations? All those are questions that planners twenty, thirty years ago weren't thinking about electric vehicles probably. Uh, how soon before we were driving Jetsons cars and do we need parking spaces anymore or do we need to have vertical parking? These these are things that sound pretty far fetched, but probably not that far in the future. And trying to think about land use and how we're going to use our our community resources is a quite a challenge, um, but if you have that the answer to how to figure those things out, I'd love to hear it.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
A little bit, I think we shouldn't. So what happens when we're making plans for all this, and I'll use parking spaces as an example, right? Like we have a parking space requirement for moving buildings or whatever. Um, when the state legislature, which they just did in this last session, and I don't know if it impacts Wellington, I haven't added the install into it. But they just passed a thing that said we can no longer require minimum parking spaces. Now, it may be for larger communities like a Fort Collins or even a Windsor, I don't know if it impacts Wellington or not. But they've eliminated state, you know, of overreaching law. They created this law that you can no longer require minimum amount of parking spaces. Because they're all on, I'm not even joking. And um, it's really like Fort Collins really has to grow up, it can't grow out anymore and they're moving towards that pretty rapidly, their current council. You know, they are in agreement with that law or whatever, but I'm just wondering, so when we're when we're doing or as a community, we have standards set. So say this particular law, if it did impact us, then is there a process for changing what we're doing quickly enough that we're making sure that we're meeting the law? But still looking out for what's best for Wellington, like what does that balance look like? Both for you and for us as planning.
Yeah, I I think the the specific example relative to parking standards um, doesn't usually come into play at a subdivision plat level, it's usually more of a site design. Um, and I'll I'll follow up on that state law to see what the applicability is and the and the reach. Um, a lot of the conversations that I've heard have been uh around uh housing affordability and not requiring minimum parking counts for affordable housing units. The cost of open surface parking is pretty high relative to land use. And you'll think about the amount of space required for every vehicle plus the turn or the um aisles between the parking spaces. It's quite a bit of space for every single vehicle and land is not cheap, especially in areas that might be more um, appropriate for affordable housing units, or if it is in a area like Denver, Fort Collins with a, in areas that are already fairly well developed, a minimum parking standard might require going vertical or parking garages, which adds a lot more expense to that project. So I think there's definitely a balancing act to making sure there's enough parking available for um, for the uses and not overburdening it with expensive, um, you know, vertical parking garages or other options. Surface parking is not a whole lot cheaper. Um, so it's definitely a balancing act and I think history has a tendency to be cyclical. A lot of the regulations that we write today will get overturned twenty years from now and it has a tendency to go back to uh kinda like a pendulum swinging, we've we've gone too far, we haven't gone far enough, we've gone too far, we haven't gone far enough.
Well, the problem with all of this is they're written with an intended consequence without any consideration for the unintended consequence. That's the problem.
Well, I guess my question was me, uh, once again confusing the subdivision process from the site plan, right? Cause I was thinking from a commercial standpoint, thinking of Sage Farms, right, and they have that commercial. But when they plot out the commercial lots, they're not showing the the parking area, right?
Yeah, traditionally not, I mean, I I think there is maybe an opportunity to to nod to if we're laying out a commercial lot for, um, you know, a specific set of intended uses. Is the lot size plotted large enough to accommodate those uses? If the if the use is a is a grocery store and we and, you know, I say a hundred thousand square foot broker store. And we've plotted the lot at a size that's, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. There's not gonna be room for loading deliveries and parking that's expected from that use. So that lot size may need to be plotted larger at the time of subdivision plat to accommodate that particular use. If they're plotting a coffee shop, they probably don't need as many parking spaces and that lot could be smaller, but we have a different zone category for that. So there's there's some nuance to it and you kinda need to look at each case by case uh proposal to make sure that when we plot it. What's intended, what was envisioned for the long range future land use? Are we making sure that there's enough space to accommodate all of those uses and still provide? Um, you know, commercial developments don't usually plot parks, but they might need to have a plaza um, to a gathering space for, you know, where those places interconnect, different businesses interact with each other. The roads are certainly a piece of that, maybe a pocket park or trail connection is needed uh through that commercial development to tie into the other surrounding developments. So there's definitely a place to think about it and look at it at the time of subdivision plat. Being able to kinda look at the the broader range of uses associated with it is pretty important. As opposed to only looking at a, the standard is checked or it's not.
I know we're not here to make changes or decisions, but just doing a quick search of a document, there's twice as many references to residential than there are commercial. So that explains why my mind went to residential, because there's twice as many references to that. So my question is, is there any benefit to having a commercial document and a residential document? Versus having them co-named?
The flow chart.
Yeah.
Chart, right? Are you talking about the flow chart?
And the the document itself, right? This is the designing improvement standards.
Yeah, so I guess not not having like a right or wrong answer, I'll just kinda share some context. Um, you could take this to an extreme, right, and say we have a set of sta- a set of development standards for subdivision plats for single family homes and a different set for multifamily and commercials the same way. Like, so it it could go too far um to where we're we're overly restricting it. Or um, the zoning standards in article five, um, the development standards, I'm sorry, chapter fifteen, article five. Probably gets a little bit more to what you're thinking about Commissioner Carmen, where it's for these particular uses. We identified, these are some additional development standards that are needed to accommodate these commercial uses. Or this specific commercial use needs X, Y and Z. Um, it's in chapter fifteen, article five, it's development standards. So I think that might get a little bit to what you're thinking about. Um, at the time of of subdivision plat, again, if you if you think about the majority Um, at the time of of subdivision plat, again, if you if you think about the majority of. Developments in a growing community are going to be primarily residential neighborhoods, and that's where. We as homeowners and residents know an awful lot about what our needs are. Um, we've all been through different life stages. I mean, raise your hand if you've never lived in an apartment. Um, whether transitioning from high school to college or college to your first home or in between jobs or what have you. Like, we all know what that experience is like and we know what we would have liked to have had if we had had a chance to redesign it. Um, so I think that's why a lot of these standards are written towards our communities or where people live. Let's make sure that we are thoughtful about where people live, how they interact with their environment. Um, and then the business side is a little bit harder to get that granular, because we don't know which businesses. We don't know what the business needs are going to be, and the businesses are going to likely change more frequently than a residential uses. Once residential, it usually stays residential until years or decades have passed and something dramatic changes. Businesses come and go. We don't know exactly what the needs are going to be, and so leaving that a little bit more flexible to. Um, determined on a case by case basis with a broad umbrella of these are the things that we need to consider. Let's make sure we account for these basic elements, then we'll go through our zoning standards for individual site design. Yeah, and not to say that's an end all be all, because I think it's a really great point. I'm not sure there's a a one size fits all answer, but some definitely some things to think about as we work through these processes. Um, I feel like we've already talked about the dedications, but that is accomplished at the time of subdivision plat. Uh, streets, uh, spaces for trails and sidewalk connections, utilities, parks and open space. And we talked a little bit about um screening and fencing relative to sound buffers and and buffers between incompatible uses. Um, I think we're we are coming close to the end here, um, so I don't want to. Um, bore you too much, but the the subdivision uh process um also includes as part of that final approval. Uh, memorandum memorandum of understanding for public improvements or development agreement, as it's more commonly referred to. Um, it establishes um the standards for what improvements are required to be constructed. And the developer has to agree to, or the the developer and the town have to agree to, this is how it's going to be built. If there's any cost sharing involved, like if the town requires oversizing. Uh, of an infrastructure element, the the developer wouldn't otherwise have to pay for. How is the town going to cover that expense and cost of the developer to share in that? We're requiring something more than what they're required to build, we would typically pay the incremental difference in that cost. Um, so those are determined through the the DA, the development agreement. Um, private improvements can also be considered as part of that if if it's a a lot times more of the uh commercial settings. Um, we know we're going to need parking lots and dry aisles, those the town doesn't want to be involved in maintaining those. Oftentimes will require an owners association or a lot owners association that's responsible for. Constructing and maintaining those spaces that share access or share uh uh. Private drainage infrastructure like stormwater detention ponds that aren't the town's ponds, but the development needs to pay for that and construct it and maintain it. A lot of that is identified in the development agreement. And after the, this kind of goes all the way back to one of the earlier comments, after. Um, after it's gone through all the town's processes and the subdivision plat is approved. Um, our civil uh designers or our our uh public works and engineering group. Reviews the public improvement plans. These are the the roads, the sidewalks, the uh water lines, fire hydrant locations. Sanitary sewer, um, and some others. Um, but they, the developer designs them, the town reviews them and says, yes, this meets our standard or no, it doesn't, please make these changes. And once the civil engineering plan set is uh is accepted, then that's what the developer is required to construct. And the physical construction can't happen until after all these subsequent or previous, excuse me, previous steps have occurred. As a recent example, in Saddleback subdivision, we spent a lot of time talking about the um. Open space areas and the right design for the landscaping for that. Um, the original plat approved uh many years ago. Um, had the had large open spaces that didn't define how to uh irrigate that landscape. Or what does what types of vegetation were installed there? And being on a town water supply, um, we realized after the fact, after it'd been approved. This is not the most efficient way to develop those areas, especially using town treated water. Why don't we rethink that? Let's make those spaces larger to conserve water. Um, where individual homeowners might be using town water to irrigate their lawn and landscape. And let's make those large open space areas native vegetation that doesn't require so much water. Let's restrict the amount of volume on that open space area to a defined amount so that we we're not. Exhausting the town's treated water supply options to irrigate acres and acres of open space that's not being used for active recreation purposes. Um, so that happened at the time of subdivision plat, when we rethought Saddleback uh subdivision and how we can make that. Uh, more conducive to the style of development and still meet the town's infrastructure needs for water.
So do you create like have them put in like a trail system or something through those native grasses? When you're cutting, when you're making changes or suggestions like that? To make sure that there's still a use of it, but not a high water demand?
Yeah, so we do, um, and it. A very much a function of the subdivision plat, um, where we identify. These are areas of interest or we're connecting these neighborhoods. We need to have a trail pedestrian and bike connection from here to here. Um, at the time of subdivision plat is when you say this tract, this open space tract allows public access. And the public improvement plans or private improvement plans. Developer, you're required to build this trail from here to here. We can define what type of trail that is. Typically, our standard for trail is a ten-foot wide concrete path with three-foot soft shoulders. Depending on the circumstance with the need, that could be modified. We do have some soft trails in some areas, uh, you know, like the the. Uh, sand and gravel base with with the ag lime uh mixed in to give it a that solid course, but it's not pavement. Um, we can agree to those. I think a more natural setting makes sense for those as opposed to a more formal setting, which is what we see most of our town developed at. Or a concrete trail is more appropriate. Um, but those are all elements to be considered at the time of subdivision plat. Typically, staff gives a pretty high level overview to the developer based on our long range plans, our trail connectivity, these are our parking open spaces. This is what we would recommend. You go and design that and submit it for review and we bring that to the planning commission. As opposed to letting the developer start with, here's how I'm going to maximize development of this site. Now, planning commission, what do you think? Does that sound familiar, Bert? We've we've tried to change that process and be a little more forward thinking in terms of, we've already got a plan for how our community should look. Please design your project to implement the community's vision for these areas instead of the other way around, which is here's how we figured out we can maximize the number of units. And we didn't provide any parks or trails. Possibly a few of us do.
Did I understand earlier from your comments uh that we don't have a list of plants?
For vegetation plants? We we do, um, we have adopted um an irrigation and landscape design manual. Um, it's a requirement for commercial and multifamily developments to follow those guidelines. It's recommended for single-family homes.
And then what about the open space?
That's included in that design manual. The the open space for like, uh, and thank you for the clarification. For like a residential subdivision, the individual lots have recommendations for, this is the best practices for water conservation. The open space areas have specific requirements that they have to follow, and we do look at that at the time of subdivision plat. Because that's the, actually on this slide, um, these are the public and private improvements. That we evaluate the design of and the plant selection, vegetation selection. So yes, that is part of this process. And oh, this is a continuation of that list, so um space for uh all the utilities, natural gas, electricity. Uh, telephone and cable, all those lovely uh pedestals that we see in the corners of our lots. Um, there has to be space for those, so we do look at, make sure that every lot that's planted has adequate continuity to have access to those. It's the benefit of the residents to have access to those facilities.
Do we set a standard for um? Internet connectivity, like for any new developments? Right.
We just, we were, the town requires the utility easements be dedicated at the time of plat. The developer is required to provide for the installation of the utilities to serve the lots. The utility companies usually have a vested interest in being in those utility easements to have a customer base to extend their networks. Um, so it's the town does.
That's the standard of what that. What the utility, the level of the utility, and I use the internet because, I mean.
The market provides that. The there's not a town requirement that says you have to provide TDS or Comcast or whatever. No, we don't have a standard for that.
So. Have an affordable housing development and they could. Put in crappier connectivity.
If it's new, they'll have nicer than what we have.
Naturally, the utility providers will give the best, do you think, or?
Well, if you if you, maybe two trains of thought. One, if as soon as the town wrote a standard that says you must provide this. It'd be out of date and we'd be requiring something that the market's providing something better. So, um, there's that train of thought. The other train of thought is that, you know, in a free market society. Competition is good. If there's more than one provider, they're competing to provide that for that market, so they're going to want to be competitive with each other. Now, I'm not going to say that it always works that way, but I'm not sure the role of the local government in dictating. Which one you're supposed to use.
I mean, like, one of the things I don't really know a lot about is that kind of utility, right? So like the communications utility is something that I just know lacks in a lot of the. More rural areas, including Wellington, right? We all. Depending on where you live, tells you which one you should get, right? Some is better than others. So like in Sage Farms, when they go to put that utility in, and please, if this is a stupid question, don't laugh at me. But so for the communications, right, the telecommunications utility, is that something that? If TDS and CenturyLink and Comcast wanted to. Be a provider in that area, would they be putting in three different lines or is it one line that serves all three? And I know that's, like, I really don't know.
Yeah, so so each utility, for for communications specifically, each one has their own line, so and they can all be in that easement. So when, at the time of subdivision plat, when we're looking at making sure each lot has adequate utility easements. We're looking at, our typical width is ten foot for dry utilities. When I said dry, we're talking telecom. There there's no separation requirements for those those types of utilities. You can lay a Comcast. Fiber directly next to a TDS cable directly next to a, you know, name your company. They can, they can lay those lines in in really close proximity, so ten foot is usually adequate width to accomplish those. When we start to have electricity and water, we need a little bit of separation there. If we have water and sanitary sewer, we need to have some separation there. So when we start to layer multiple utilities in the same easement, sometimes we need to require more width there. And so when we look at subdivision plats and laying out those utility easements. Town staff is going to be your primary driver of looking for those things. Hey, wait a minute, your your infrastructure plans already call for a sewer line and a water line, and you're only providing a twenty-foot easement. Where are the other utilities going to go? We don't want them crossing our water lines to where it's interfering or we're cutting through people's cable service to repair a water line. You need to increase the width of that easement to make sure there's room for the dry utilities. So that's the function of the subdivision plat, but the hoop, aside from the water sewer roads and storm drainage. The town provides, the private market dictates who is in which easement. But if there's a new company out there, say cable provider X. And they want to come into the market, they've got utility easements, they don't need any permission except for a right away permit from the town to come in and install. Their utilities, they've got a right to be there. That's what the utility easement provides. They need customers, so and and that's where the market gets interesting. If someone comes in and says, hey, we can provide it better than our competitors and we're willing to take that risk and pay for it. We're going to capture that customer base. That's where you start to see businesses come and go. Excellent.
I mean, I learned a lot of new things. Well, and the question actually comes from more of a water thing, so. To my other planning commissioner job, right? The Thornton Pipeline has a path that it's going to be placed in, and there are places. By request that it's of the county that it's going to be on the same utility easement as the NISP pipeline. Which is a different water pipeline. And so. Like from a separation, like I knew the water could be two different things, because obviously Thornton's water isn't stopping anywhere. Up in northern Colorado, right? But the NISP is a northern Colorado irrigation. So there are places where they're in the same place, so I didn't know from a utility standpoint, like the. You know, more specifically telecommunications, if that was a thing, water or electricity and gas and stuff, that's. Generally, you have, you get what you get, right? You don't get a lot of choices and that.
Yeah, the some some um, some utility services are more competitive than others. Sometimes you only have one option.
Here is your option if you want to turn on your TV.
Of course. Other questions and discussion? That was the end of the presentation that I had prepared. Obviously, there's there's a little more. In there than what we put in the slideshow, what we discussed today. But the the intent was to give you that that overview. I'm happy to field any questions. If you think of something afterwards, feel free to send me an email with your questions and I can reply out to the group. Um, with some answers. Um, but yeah, anything else on subdivisions? Excellent. Well, I don't have anything further for you tonight. I'll be happy to provide some follow-ups. I'll I'll follow up with um. Flowchart of the development application processes. And then, yeah, we'll look at next meeting and and next work session topics to see what might be next on the radar. Any particular requests for for next topics? I didn't bring my list of other ideas with me tonight. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring that.
Well, I guess. Protocol for July, if there are no action items, do we want to do another work session or?
Yeah, and uh that's fair, and so I, that's kind of the the way I was operating is if um, if we don't have a a. A site plan that's ready for review for for the July first meeting, then we would probably cancel that meeting. I did want to, and admittedly, thank you all for being here. I felt we needed to have this meeting to cover this topic. Because I am anticipating the applications for subdivisions coming in soon, and I didn't want to schedule. A work session on the topic and then immediately roll into an application with that same subject matter, so. I wanted to kind of get in front of this a little bit and have this conversation before uh plat application for Sage Farms were submitted.
Are you allowed to tell us what it is?
That's that's the one that I reasonably anticipate, um, because it's the uh most ready for, we just annexed it. I know that that developer is working through next steps and wants to file soon. Um, and I didn't want to have multiple competing interests with discussing the procedures and then immediately rolling into them. It it's a phased development plan. I don't anticipate plating the whole thing unless it's just plating as a tract, you know, one big tract. Well, there's there's risk, and I've done a lot of replats for master plan communities in in my, not in Wellington, but in my past career. Where you plat hundreds of acres for a vision and then you find out by the time you get to that let next phase. Fifteen years after the fact, you know, we didn't know everything then, we have to redo it. I've done a lot of those, and we will do those here too, but that's part and parcel.
I have a quick question. I've had a lot of people asking how or what Quil is doing over here. And how is approved without the planning commission?
The, yeah, I I can't speak to the specifics, but the from the past, um, this planning commission was presented with a site plan application. For some site improvements, um, through that process, the applicant advised us that that wasn't something that was financially feasible. Or desirable at this time, and so they moved on to a different set of plans with um just a fence permit. For enclosing a patio area and maintenance of the property as it existed. So it wasn't a substantive change that required through our site plan review process. They scaled the scope of that project back to something that didn't require site plan review. Um, and so they've moved on to maintenance of that property with a fence permit and continuing their existing operations.
Okay.
Thank you all.